Good evening and welcome to the Akron Public Schools Board Meeting on January 27th of 2025. Roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander.
Present.
Ms. Hall.
Present.
Reverend Harrison.
Present.
Ms. Jackson.
Present.
Dr. Monar.
Present.
Mrs. Sykes.
Present.
Six present, one absent.
Thank you. Could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Member Sykes, do you mind leading us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the fact of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to turn the board meeting over to Dr. Robinson as we get ready for the Ohio School Board Association's School Board Recognition Month presentation.
Thank you, President Jackson. Tonight, we are honored to have three special guests from NIFSTEM High School at Robinson CLC with us. Please welcome Principal Dina Popa, Sam Appleby. Did I pronounce it correctly? Thank you. Innovation Lab Coach and one of his exceptionally talented students, Junior Kenya West. In celebration of Board Appreciation Month, Sam and Kenya have designed a created and created a unique gift for each of our board members in their school's makerspace. These gifts represent the creativity and dedication of our students and our educators. At this time, I'd like to turn the floor over to Dean, Principal Popa, Mr. Appleby, and Kenya, please.
Good evening, everyone. January marks Ohio School Board Recognition Month, a time to celebrate the contributions of our school board members. This year's theme is "School Board Superheroes," and it reminds us of the vital role you play in shaping our district's vision, allocating resources, and ensuring the success of every student and educator. On behalf of our entire community, I want to express our heartfelt gratitude for your service and your leadership. Coach Appleby?
All right, I'm going to mention a little bit about our makerspace. So when they moved us into Robinson CLC, they did a fabulous job making modifications. Our makerspace has eight 3D printers, two laser engravers, three vinyl cutters, a vacuum former, a button maker, and a sewing machine. So we keep it pretty busy, spend a lot of time in there as the kids are coming up with their ideas and helping, you know, bring them to life, and I enjoy helping them with that, so thank you. I think they're in the white, white bags. Can you help me talk a little bit about the project?
Hi, I'm Kenya. I'm a junior at STEM High School. I'm in the Environmental Engineering Pathway, and I'm a technician, which means I and others like me spend especially like amount of time in the makerspace with the various equipment in there. So we picked a PNG of the Akron Public Schools logo, adjusted it a little bit to how we would, how we think would look the best on the coasters. We used the two Dremel laser engravers that we have and alternated between the two to complete all 11 coasters. The front with the Akron Public Schools logo took around 15 minutes each, and the back with the created by at STEM High School took about two minutes. And we sealed those with acrylic, and now you have them.
Thank you to Principal Popa, Mr. Appleby, and to Kenya for sharing those thoughtful projects and for highlighting the creative work happening at NIFSTEM High School at Robinson CLC. Board members, we certainly hope that these gifts reflect the appreciation of our students and staff for the time and effort you dedicate to our school district. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Superintendent, and thank you also to our NIFSTEM family. The gifts are wonderful. At this time, we will have board reflections, and we will start with Devon Caldwell Sales, our student board member. And I saw Mr. Caldwell Sales' father walk in too. Hello, Mr. Caldwell Sales, sir.
Good evening, Madam President, Mr. Superintendent, honorable board members and guests. My name is Devon Caldwell Sales, and I am a senior at Buckto CLC. In my free time, I attend community-sponsored events at the library, play video games, and take care of my two young cousins, Henry and Lamontae. I chose to continue my pursuit of being a member of the Scholar Board to make a sustainable change within my school, but it is also an opportunity to gain insight from my peers and to speak up for them when they cannot do the same for themselves. I'm here today to bring your attention to a funding issue at Buckto that is preventing certain classes, clubs, sports teams, and other programs from performing at their highest potential. Several students in the band have shared that their equipment is in desperate need of repairs, which hinders their ability to perform effectively and represent our school at its best. Additionally, after-school clubs have been directly impacted by funding cuts. One notable example is the Westside Riders Club led by Ms. Turk, a passionate ELA teacher. This club provided a safe and creative space where students could bring in their poems for feedback, read books, or simply listen to others share their stories and ideas. Unfortunately, due to a lack of funding, Ms. Turk has not been able to host this program, leaving many students without meaningful opportunity for growth and expression. Another pressing challenge is the food quality. Many of our breakfast and lunch options are heavily processed and high in sugar or salt, posing long-term health risks such as diabetes, cancer, and other diet-related conditions. While there have been some improvement, the current food options still leave much to be desired. I believe our meals should be prepared fresh on-site and include produce sourced from local farms. Not only would this improve the quality of our, quality and neutral nutritional value of our meals, but it could also encourage more students to eat during the day, boosting their energy and focus. Unfortunately, many students still choose to skip meals altogether due to current poor food quality, which affects their ability to perform academically. Our sports teams are also feeling the strain of insufficient funding. Invitational track meets, for instance, cost between $200 and $600. Sports like bowling and golf, which require the use of off-site facilities, face additional challenges because they cannot host concession stand fundraisers or sell entrance tickets. This lack of funding limits their ability to purchase essential items like gym equipment, uniforms, and shoes, making it difficult for these teams to compete at a high level. I believe with the support of the board and the involvement of volunteers, we could organize fundraisers at Buckto to address these needs. Events such as benefits concerts, community dinners, or school festivals could help generate resources while also fostering stronger community connections. These efforts could provide our band with functional equipment, our athletes with the tools they need to succeed, and our students with the nutritional meals they need to support their health and learning. Finally, I want to stress the importance of after-school programs. These programs not only keep our students safe, but also engage them in positive activities that build skills, confidence, and connections within the community. Expanding after-school options is a critical step towards creating a well-rounded educational experience at Buckto. With your support, we can make these changes a reality. Together, we can ensure that every student at Buckto has the resources, opportunities, and environment they need to thrive. Thank you all for your time and consideration. I look forward to working to make a difference for our school.
Excellent, young man. Thank you. Next, we will have any... Yes, next, before we have any statements from board members, the next person you will hear from is any reflections from the community or board member. We do have Cynthia Blake, as far as our community members, the only community member after our board reflections. Member Monar.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say thank you for not just your speech just now and your reflection just now, but thank you for articulating it in a very agenda format, right? This is, this is what I need. This is what my school needs, my classmates need, because that makes it easier when you articulate it that way, easier for us to try to do something about it, and that's the goal of this. The goal of this isn't just to give you the confidence to say it, but for us then to be motivated to help you achieve it. And so with that, I want to say, one of the items that I heard you talk about was the food quality and heavily processed foods and how that also you, I heard you say that it is affecting your learning also with that. And I think that is exactly the type of issue that, you know, we talk about working out through committee and getting it through a committee and then bringing it to the full board and finding more information. So with that, if you would be interested, I would be happy to work with you and see if that's something we could bring to one of our actual board committees. And so we'll, we'll connect and then we can try to do that. I would be really happy to work with you and see if we can make meaningful change.
That's excellent. Thank you. Member Monar is your board liaison for the Buckto Cluster, so she may connect with that after-school teacher, the ELA teacher that you were referencing, and maybe you guys can collaborate on that level within the school building. I think that would be great because some things that do exist for fresh fruits, I know they had grant programs, and I wish, I don't know if Ms. Falk is here today, but I know they have the Fresh Fruit Grant Programs, which afforded the opportunity for schools within the state to, if they apply for that grant, to receive fresh fruits and things like that. And to Member Monar's point, we probably can expand upon that. Additionally, the state, the state of Ohio does some great things when it comes to education. Additionally, the state of Ohio, we have out-of-school time grants. And Superintendent, that can be something because when it's general funds may be depleted, the collaboration, and just as Member Monar said, with teachers and students, people who have that skill set could possibly write the grant to secure those funds. I'm sorry, can possibly do something to secure those funds. So we're grateful for that and for the collaboration. Member Hall?
I just want to say thank you for your leadership, and thank you to also the other young people here. You know, it's no more where we just go to school, sit down, and learn. You know, we have, you have a voice. I don't know, a lot of us may not have had that voice back in high school, but I appreciate your voice because you are being heard. When it comes to, you saying banned equipment and things like that, there was just a lady I met with the other day at a YSS, which is an out-of-school time network. They're trying to put things together to help assist families with after-school programs. She said, "I have a flute, and I want to donate it to Buckto. What do I need to do?" She used to be a flute teacher, and I said, "We'll call it to the school and talk to the principal and see when you can drop it off." So thank you for that. Your voices are heard, and keep it coming because the only way we can make a difference is when you speak up. Thank you.
Are there any other board member reflections at this time? Yes, Member Hall? We're doing reflections through it all because then I'm going back to Superintendent because we started. Yeah, I think you looked over here. I thought somebody, I'm acknowledging you, Member Hall.
No, thank you, Madam President. I wanted to wait my turn. Last Friday was Read to Akron, and I read at Essex Preschool. Those little kids were amazing. We read the book, "I Got the Rhythm." The book was by Connie Schofield Morrison, and I read to two pre-K classes, Mrs. Lowers and Mrs. Laura. Those were the teachers in the pre-K class. Those kids were so attentive and so excited and so interactive, and you know, I can be over dramatic too. So, you know, we were clapping and stomping and yelling, and teachers were like, "What are you doing?" So my apologies. Thank you to Ms. Jen Douglas, the principal there, who allowed us to come in and read to the students. I also wanted to give a shout out to Toby Litchey Clifford. He will be retiring on the 28th of February, and he told me to say he is retiring with 34.61 years. So thank you for your services. Yes, very worthy of a hand. Clap to him. And then really quick, I just want to thank the Superintendent and his staff. I notice when we're having our board meetings, when parents come up and express their concerns, I notice there is someone from the administration that gets up and follow that person out and talks to them or maybe take their information. I'm not exactly sure what goes on, but I know that someone is getting up from me seeing this, getting up and following that person out. So I just appreciate that because one thing I hate is when you're, you're talking, don't want to say hate, but I do dislike it. You know, you come to express your concern, and we just look at you. We just look at you. We can't give feedback. We can't give anything. So by a member of your staff going out to speak to these parents or whoever has a need, I really appreciate that, and I just want to say thank you, Superintendent. Thank you to your staff for recognizing that these parents and other community members not only want to express their voice, but they are being heard. So thank you.
Are there any board member school community reflections? Member Monar, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I just have a few from Saturday. First, Saturday was Resnick PTA Skate Night. There are over 300 people at Springfield Roller Rink for Skate Night, and I was impressed to see how coordinated some of the kids were for Glow Skate Night. But before that, I was at the Higher CLC's Boy Scout Chariot Races. And so there are over 119 scouts there from nine packs, and we had four schools represented from APS, so Betty Jane, Case, Resnick, and King. And the chariot races, not the Pinewood Derby, which is what I thought it was going to see, were fun. The kids got to pull each other around. You got to see teamwork, creativity, spirit. And also, I was pleased to see a lot of Girl Scouts, Girl-Boy Scouts, winning a lot of the heats also. So it was great to see that there. And then even before that, busy day, just all Saturday, at Ellett CLC, we had our APS STEM Expo, and also was the 15th Annual Bridge Competition as part of that STEM Expo. So I want to give a shout out and happy to say congratulations to Margot and Donna because they are the girls from Sarah Schaefer's APS Physics Team from Firestone CLC who won the bridge competition. So once again, girls for the win here. So I was happy to congratulate Margot and Donna, and their bridge not only won, but it won by at least 30 pounds. And I'm saying at least 30 pounds because I think it could have, it could have held more. It looked like it could have held more. So with all of those things, I just have one mention is being around so many people in one day, one common thread that I heard again and again was people mentioning conversations that they had with the board. And then I looked at them, and I felt sad because I didn't talk to them. And so I didn't know really what they meant by the board. And I looked into district policy, and the board is defined as the collective body of elected representatives, the seven of us here. And so I don't know if someone is, you know, inadvertently causing, you know, confusion or something like that when people come to the board office rather than with board members. So I think my call to action this week is possibly as a board, we should come up with a resolution of some kind or just some kind of further discussion to establish guidelines to ensure communications attributed to the board are actually from members of the board and kind of clarify, so there aren't two boards. So that is my community reflection.
Excellent. Thank you, Member Monar, and I think that's a very valid point because I've been saying that for some time, people say the board, or my child was referred to the board, and they believe that the seven elected officials are aware of their issues and their concerns, and we're not. So I think just clarifying that because people identify 10 North Main Street as the board because it's the Board of Education, and so that term is generally used. So I think that's a very well-placed point. Thank you. Are there any more community reflections? Okay, I have one. Just very quickly, this is my reflection from January 27th of this year. I'm thrilled to highlight some outstanding achievements and experience from our schools this month. Firstly, congratulations to Ms. Wilkerson, a fifth-grade teacher at Helen Arnold Community Learning Center for achieving value-added on her class's Ohio State Test. Value-added, basically, it measures the academic progress of students by comparing their growth against anticipated levels of progress and how they did in previous years. And it provides a metric for educators to develop high-quality instruction to ensure that they are using best practices that then result in gains on testing. So I definitely wanted to highlight her and thank Ms. Wilkerson for all of her achievements and just to say that this is a testament to her exceptional teaching. On my recent visit to her classroom on January 16th, as I stated, I observed her students deeply engaged in writing opinion pieces. And what I thought was so great about this is because we got fifth graders, and they explained to me, she had them explain to me, "What are we doing?" And what I need you to know is when teachers are the real deal, this was not a scheduled visit. I was there because the president from the University of Akron was reading to our learners, and I went to visit. I popped in her classroom. Her students were writing opinion pieces. She says, "Tell, this is your board president," she explained with the board, and she said, "Could you explain to her what you're doing?" And the student said, "Yes, we're writing an opinion piece. In the opinion piece, we have to use textual evidence to support our position." Fifth grade, that's how excellence looks different. I was so happy to see that. Then I went down to Ms., I believe her name is pronounced Regimaw. If someone is here that can correct me, or Regimaw, I would appreciate that. She's a kindergarten teacher at Helen Arnold as well. It was so wonderful to be there. Her kids engaged me on running through some addition drills, and they wanted me to know that they knew how to count and to add large numbers. They were kindergartners. They were excited about the reading and the books, so I was just very glad to be there. Finally, I had the pleasure to meet someone from the Buckto Cluster. And if anyone knows the people from the Buckto Cluster summer, you guys are going to go down to your grave representing 1040 Buckto High School. You all be 70 years old with Letterman jackets on, and I appreciate that. And I said, "I got to do better as a Garfield alum. I got to, I got to do something. I got to see how I can get back to those wonderful scholars into my alma mater." But I met this woman. Her name was Linda Brown, 1974 graduate. She continues to give back to her alma mater through alumni relations and the PTA, and she was very excited about it. PTA and she was very um, excited about engaging me in this board. So to your point, Mr. Caldwell Sales about how to better help Bookto and what they can offer uh, to the school. So I just wanted to definitely highlight her and thank her for um, being willing to inspire collaborations with this district and with the next generation of uh, Bookto students. And that concludes my board reflections. Next, we will have the superintendent, um, with some of his recogni- recognitions. Superintendent?
Thank you, President Jackson. The first recognition is the Superintendent Book, um, of the Month Club and kudos goes to our top readers, um, for December. It was wonderful to see our scholars make time for reading even during the, the Christmas uh, winter break, I'm sorry. Uh, in elementary, we had first grader Brianna Ramsey from Windermere, uh, who read an impressive thirty books. Let's give her a hand. And she was also the November winner as well. Um, yes, she was. So middle school Cooper, uh, is it Jen Draw? Um, he's a seventh grader from the National Inventors Hall of Fame STEM Middle School who read twenty-eight books. And high school Cleveland Robinson, he's a tenth grader from North who read seventeen In total, our scholars achieved the following milestones. K to five, um, kindergarten and fifth grade read nine hundred fourteen books, middle schoolers read one hundred six books and our high schoolers read forty books. A, just give them a hand. And a special recognition, uh, congratulation goes to the schools with the highest number of books, uh, read. Barbara CLC with three hundred sixty books read. Ennis Middle School with forty-three books read and North High School with thirty books that were read. And so I would like to um, recognize our scholars we have and I want to thank Acme for supporting this initiative and providing gift cards to our scholars that are our top winners. And I'm very appreciative again to the teachers and to our, our school leaders who are supporting and because this is a, a volunteer thing, they don't have to do it. And so I, I thank the teachers who are working with us to get this done, give them a hand. And our um, principals that are also supporting them. So if you can come up, Brianna Cooper Cleveland and then Barbara CLC, Ennis and North High School.
Congratulations. You are excellent. Yes.
Is that with Ms. Zaya West? Ms. West? And?
C. Let's start again. C. Excellent. C. Akron.
Again, my name is Devon Caldwell Sales and today you will be learning about a new student-led and student-created organization called C Akron. Students from eight Akron High Schools meet monthly with the Summit Education Initiative to develop skills around emotional leadership, student, student organization and art as advocacy. Our norms are one, committed to learning, remain curious, challenge ourselves, reflect and refine, engage and enjoy, and collaborate. I'm going to pass it to two of our founding members, Jordan Holloway and Harlem Parsons to follow up on part one.
Good evening. I'm Jordan.
And I'm Harlem.
Have you ever struggled to identify who you are as a person? Have you ever felt some type of way but can't explain it or didn't know why? In the development of C Akron, we had great and vulnerable conversations to, on these topics. First, we use identity map to reflect and see how, and see how we see in ourselves and see how we see in others. Then we use the emotional will to debrief and dissect our feelings. Using our emotional, emotional leadership skills, we learn to enhance our leadership capabilities.
There are three categories to the emotional will. Primary, secondary, and tertiary. Primary is the will that tells vague emotions with commonly used words like happy, sad, or disgusted. Secondary uses description of the emotion to emphasize the vague feelings in a different manner. Tertiary will have the most detail and could describe more than one primary or secondary emotion at one time. The emotional will could be used when someone is in need of emotional guidance about what they are feeling. With that description, you can use that to help them express their emotions. And we focused on emotional leadership to ensure that we are the leaders who inspire other students to excel. Now I would introduce my fellow colleagues, Anaya Law and Felicia Coggins.
Hello, my name is Anaya Law and I'm here to introduce you to our learning outcomes, things we have achieved through all the past months in our meetings. We created a student organization based on survey data. We developed an organizational constitution and we identified the important aspects of a team culture. Students for Equity and Excellence, this is our mission statement. C Akron is a student-led organization that promotes equity, respect, and excellence in our schools. We believe in creating a supportive environment where all students are heard, valued, and treated fairly. Our mission is to work alongside teachers, staff, and peers to ensure that schools become spaces where everyone can thrive academically, socially, and emotionally.
Good evening. My name is Felicia Coggins. I am speaking with you about our goals for Akron-C. Our goals are foster open communication between students and staff, create safe and supportive spaces, advocate for fair and equitable school policies, promote emotional well-being and personal growth, build a culture of empathy and fairness, and improve, and improve school safety and community. Thank you. Now I would like to present Zaya West.
The computer is active. Well, hello everyone. My name is Zaya West. I am a senior at Firestone High School and I'm also one of the many founders of C Akron, Students for Equity and Excellence. This organization was created because we see a lot of issues within our schools and we are here today to try our best to make a change. Even though we are fairly new, we have many powerful voices that are here, some that you see and some that we're working behind closed doors, but they all have a powerful voice and want to make change. Our goal is to give all students a voice in Akron Public Schools with the opportunity and platform to improve school education, culture by using relationships with C members, faculty, staff, and stakeholders. I'm so sorry, technology is not working with me today. I'm usually like the tech person, we're supposed to be the tech generation, but sometimes I can't even do it. So let me just reiterate that. We created this organization because we want to see a lot of, we see a lot of issues within our schools and we're here today to try our best to make a change. And even though we are fairly new, we have very many powerful voices that are here and some that are working strongly behind closed doors that are willing to bring a change in our community. Our goal is to give all students in Akron Public Schools a voice with the opportunity and platform to improve school education, culture, and relationships with C members, faculty, staff, and stakeholders like you guys today. We will host meetings where we will discuss the change students want to see and how to effectively present that to stakeholders while keeping each other accountable for small leadership roles within our school. Our plan is to bring together all eight high schools, like you see many of us today, through a series of ongoing leadership developments, events, and to take action and make change. Now pass it on to Pamela Rogers.
Good evening. Our students for this group were split into three groups. Um, the group one was used for the graphic design, used for the t-shirts that I'm wearing today. They made both t-shirts, they made the design of both the front and the back of the shirt for our logo. The group, the second group is for the public speaking that you see before us, before you today. They want to speak to you about the changes that we feel need to be made in APS schools. And group three is made for videos that show the progress and process that were made these past few months. So I think technology is just not on our side today. So I would like to now, um, introduce Jeremiah Emanuel.
Hello, I'm Jeremiah Emanuel and the C Akron Youth Led Summit, May twenty twenty-five. We plan to launch C Akron in our eight Akron High Schools in August twenty twenty-five. Equity. Excellent. C. Akron.
Thank you. That was a wonderful presentation. I'm not shocked because I know you all are excellent. Um, and I appreciate you being here on today. My question just for you guys to go with because you want to implement this in August of twenty twenty-five and I think it's important that student voice is heard because we need to hear about your real experience in the school so we can know how to better activate policies and change and governance over those things. Um, do you all have, I see Firestone representing, I see Bookto representing, what other schools? Is any, Akron early?
LACLC.
LACLC, okay, excellent. Yes, babe. E's, alright, ECLC. The reason I'm asking is because you guys need to be in contact and you know the teachers that really rock heavy with you all and that'll be down with the initiative and that's who you want to kind of see because you're going to need an advisor to be in the building, you're going to need a, a staff advisor. So start building those relationships and see, because this will be great. And I saw you had outcomes, you had all the information necessary to get some money. To write a grant. So, and Ms. Jay, I will help, I will support in any way I can and once you guys get this together, uh, to sit with your advisors or come to the school, whoever working with you, I will sit and grind it out with you all as far as trying to find, uh, sustainable ways or grant funds that will help support these initiatives. And the same with my colleague as Monar is meeting with, um, Mr. Caldwell Sales, okay? But excellent, thank you. Uh, yes, um, member Harrison?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, I had an opportunity to, uh, watch them work through some of this and watch them, um, collaborate with each other. I thought it was pretty impressive. Um, and I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, but I want a, the brother to come up and introduce himself, um, because he, he simply works this, what seems to be chaotic to me. He, he works it out with them. And so, uh, if you can just come up and give us your name and, um, I'm, I apologize, I don't remember your name, but I just-
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Derek Holyfield. I'm currently a doctoral student at Harvard University and, uh, I'm a former principal from the Cleveland Metropolitan School District.
Alright. Holyfield. The real deal, Holyfield. Alright. Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you for your work, member Harrison. Thank you for highlighting that because that's important too, to give people their flowers now. So thank you for what you're doing. Um, Vice President Alexander?
Yes, thank you Pastor Harrison for mentioning that because I saw the, the brother over there standing and he, I saw him also that same day you were seeing him and they did a good job. I want to touch base with them because I might have an opportunity for them to go down to the state. Um, I got an email about, uh, some of our students going down, so I need to touch base with them and maybe, uh, any other group that we have that's, um, uh, doing some work such as them so we can see if we can get them down there to present, uh, at the state. So I need to talk to them.
Excellent, excellent. And Zaya, then you, when you talk, you know, you have your, your program too that you've been initiating, so that's something to talk to Ms. Alexander about because you play in dual roles. Is there any other comments?
Thank you. Um, the only thing that I wanted to say, um, is I would like to make sure that the group gets, uh, connected to central office so that we can partner, um, and work collaboratively with you to make sure that whatever you're trying to do, that we can help roll that out, um, with you here in the district. Okay? And that completes the recognitions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Superintendent. Next, we will have, um, the superintendent's report. Well, I, I did, I tried to do the community reflections and no one? Oh, okay, request to address the board. I said I had Cynthia Blake was the only person that I had to, um, that signed up. Are there any other requests?
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening. Um, last week when I had spoke, I mean, or two weeks ago, I do have a correction. I think I used it, uh, twenty-three percent for, that's how many teachers live in the district, but it's really forty-eight percent. So I wanted to correct myself on that. And then also, when I watched, uh, meeting on Tuesday, your Equity Committee meeting, there was an alarming number that said forty-one percent of, uh, teachers absenteeism and I just wanted to know why, um, that can't get reported by the media because I know they quick to vilify you as a criminal on some he said, she said. But, uh, that would be great if they could do some true journalism, uh, regarding how high absenteeisms from a teacher's, uh, would affect the students. And I would like to know how much it costs if these high rates of absenteeism for a substitute teacher versus where the teacher is in. And then also, which buildings have the highest absenteeism and which clusters? So this way, as a community, when we're out here trying to make impact and find resources for our children, like the online tutoring, and I'm not going to let that go, and social workers, that we're always hit with opposition from them to file lawsuits. But what safety nets can they put in place about high absenteeism for teachers? Thank you.
Thank you. So there's no other? Okay, again, thank you, uh, Ms. Blake for that. We have no other.
nets can they put in place about high absenteeism for teachers? Thank you.
Thank you. So there's no other? Okay, again, thank you, Ms. Blake, for that, we have no other requests to address the board at this time, and so now we'll hear from the Superintendent.
Thank you, President Jackson. I want to recognize, so that we're not holding them behind, the Presidential Awards for Excellence in Science, Mathematics, and Engineering Mentoring Honors, the Hard and Dedicate, Hard Work and Dedication Mentors Exhibit in Broadening Participation in STEM Pathways. This award honors organizations that have demonstrated excellence in mentoring individuals from groups that are underrepresented in STEM, education, and the workforce. Colleagues, administrators, and students nominate organizations for exemplary mentoring sustained over a minimum of five years. The National Science Foundation, on behalf of the White House Office of Science and Technology Policy, which is referred to as OSTP, provides each recipient $10,000. One of the, this year's organization recipients is indeed Akron Public Schools. Science and Health Department, under the leadership of Dr. Katrina Halasa, with assistance from John Nah, did I get it right? Okay, Ms. Johnna O'Neil and Ms. Krista Galloway. I want to say congratulations to them, could you?
Halasa, I already know you're excellent, but see, I knew what was special about you, I see you with those pandas on.
Those are my sisters making me hip, so definitely. I would like to thank Dr. Robinson, Madam President Carla Jackson, Dr. Thompson, and the amazing honored Board members, thank you for recognizing us today. This is the, what we would call the three-legged stool. We have been waiting to hear about this for, since 2020, actually. We applied once, and we were told that they weren't going to give us any feedback, please reapply again. I'm like, well, how do you reapply for something when you don't know what you've done wrong? And they're like, just trust us Katrina, to reapply again. So my group here, you know, one who likes to make it rosy glasses, Krista, and this one who always refines us and tries to keep us in line, Ms. Johnna, was like, Katrina, why are you doing this again and again? And I'm like, because I believe that it, it really comes down to this, and this is what we wrote. The Presidential Award is a humbling opportunity to reflect and validate urban education. Is a game changer for mentoring strong connections among educators, community, and scholars. Our three-tiered approach to mentoring creates an environment where young minds are seen, heard, and valued. We created trails for young scholars, however they forge new paths and directions that develop us into the workforce, for leadership, and hopefully voting citizens. What we believe in is that you start by having students be the center. If you do not look at your work and ask yourself, is this good for kids, or scholars, then the answer is yes, the next question is, how do we do this? So our second tier area is that we begin to think about not just the opportunity, but how do we support our teachers? Whether it's resources, whether it's the curriculum knowledge, or whether it's actually the materials that they may need in order to provide that. We meet our teachers where they're at. We don't assume that everybody knows everything, but we know that their heart is into what we do. And the last one is community. It has to be a win-win with our community. We cannot just go to the community and say, give me, give me, give me. They themselves have to win something in the process. And we have been fortunate to have over 35 different types of projects and activities, it's probably more than that, because every year there seems to be another thing added at the time, and we had over probably 50 different project-based learning projects that we've associated with, and we have worked with over 300 different types of organizations in over the 18 years that we have worked. Now, when I first started this journey, I would tell you that I was, I was lonely only, so it was 2006, and it wasn't until about eight years later that I inherited a beautiful Johnna O'Neil, who saved my life and was there, and then Ms. Krista, who, what did you say to me? I'm not scared of you?
Right.
At the interview? And ended up coming with us, and we became the three stools. Now, each one are in different positions at this point, but this was the solid foundation that was able to make us not only talk about being number one, but being number one because we kept our focus on students, and that is the most important thing in our district. Ladies, would you like to add anything?
We appreciate Dr. Halasa's leadership and the great team, and she led us well. Yes, she did.
So here's a little something for both of you, for allowing me to be a we, never, it's a team effort. I would like everyone to remind you, you are no better if you do not have people who surround you and actually support you. It is never the leader itself, it is the people that you surround yourself with. So thank you very much, and I just want to acknowledge our families are all here, even surprisingly to others, because they didn't know it, so they're all here, and they've made sacrifices to let us do what we do.
Thank you again, C.
Wanted to acknowledge two of our scholars placed first in staying safe contests that was held this year. They are recognized in the 2025 Safety Kids Calendar. Their port, their drawings are here, we will, we were able to, they only gave us, because we didn't publish this, so we were only able to get a couple of books, so the scholars got one to bring to their families. But I just wanted to say thank you, and congratulations to Aubrey and Martina, who are two of our scholars that are in seventh grade at higher CLC. The Elit CLC, Navy Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps, the NJ ROTC, was notified that with their increased enrollment above the minimum requirement for viability, the unit has been removed from low enrollment probation, and a letter was sent to me regarding that. And so I want to say congratulations to our junior ROTC teachers, instructors, who have worked, I know they've been working long before I got here, but I know this past year they were really working to up enrollment, and so they were able to do that. And Akron is, I think, the only district in this state, I think I'm correct on that, that has all branches of the service in our schools, and so I just want to say thank you to them. I do want to also say thank you to Mr. David and Ms. Cheryl Vernarich for donating 1,150 food bags to Glover CLC, Leggett CLC, Reimer CLC, and Sam Salem CLC, and 20 pairs of leggings and sweatpants for Portage Path CLC for their clothes closet. So let's give them a hand, please. Akron Public Schools is proud to announce its selection as part of the Federal Communications Commission, the FCC, not sure where Mr. Zach went, but, and that's for our Libraries and Schools Cybersecurity Pilot Program. This initiative aims to enhance cybersecurity measures for educational institutions nationwide, and through this pilot program being implemented for the first time to engage and strengthen cybersecurity defenses, Akron Public Schools will receive nearly $200,000, am I correct? Mr. Zach? Okay. $200,000 in funding for the implementation of Palo Alto Networks Cortex X-SOAR Platform. Mr. Henshaw, Executive Director of IT, and Mr. Dan Kirk, Networking Services Coordinator, collaborated to apply for this opportunity. Mr. Henshaw, can you stand, just so that everybody can know who you are? Thank you. Let's give them a hand, please. Project MKC, formerly known as Making Kids Count, donated 8,000 diapers, 12,000 wipes, 1,600 feminine products, and eight toiletry kits to stock our family resource centers. The LeBron James Family Foundation introduced APS to Justin Coffin and Project MKC. The partnership reflects our shared commitment to ensuring that every child has access to resources they need. Let's give them a hand, please. Also, Jamar Hooks, thank you for donating your Whirlpool washing machine to Voris CLC so that they can wash our kids' clothes and help take care of them. Let's give them a hand. Enunciation Greek Orthodox Church donated 142 pairs of girls' briefs, 33 pairs of girls' tights, 97 pairs of boys' briefs, 16 pairs of boys' sweats, and one girl's coat for our students that are in need. Let's give them a hand. Just a reminder to our parents about the inclement weather, even though we say it a lot, but just to remind them, because sometimes they, sometimes they'll forget in a panic, but just stay tuned to the news stations, our website, text messages, robocalls that we're sending out to make sure that, and also, we want to make sure that your emergency contact information has been updated. Ms. Yvonne Culver?
Good evening.
Good evening.
We were working on updating some of our emergency procedures, and we got information that kind of shocked me a little bit, and it is out of our approximately 20,000 students. We only have about 6,700 that have current updated emergency contacts where they've gone in and updated their contacts. So over two-thirds of our kids have outdated information. So we're doing a push to get this information updated, and we want our, our families to know that this is coming, and this is to help us better support your child. We are also instituting what we are calling an emergency authorized contact, and the emergency authorized contact is a little different from what we've had before. Before, we had to call you. Your emergency contact could come in, but if we had not spoken directly to you, then your child had to stay, you know, be in pain, throw up, whatever, until you told us it was okay for someone to take your child. We are giving this step as an authorized emergency contact, where you are telling us in advance, yes, grandma can take my child home. So we're still going to try to, to get in touch with you, but in the event that we cannot, you have told us it's okay to let this person take your child home. So it's, it's real important that as families update this information, that they make sure they have someone that they are willing to allow to, their child to be released to, and we also want to make sure that it's somebody that has the capacity to do it. So do they have a car? Are they physically able to come in and get your child? You also will have the right to, to opt out, but if you opt out of an emergency authorization, then your child will be in the clinic or whatever until we can actually get in touch with you. So think about that, talk about that, figure out what's best for your family. We do have to say, in case of a medical emergency requiring EMS or something like that, we will go ahead and, and have your child treat it, but if your child has the flu, headache, something like that, and you don't want anyone else to pick them up, you have that option of opting out. So we will be doing a big push, and we hope to get all 20,000 contacts updated. Thank you.
Thank you. And so as we do this, we're trying to get our families to work with us, so I'm looking for the classroom in whatever school who has 100% homeroom classroom. In high school, we generally don't have homeroom, but we have a first period, so whichever school comes in first, then I'm going to make sure that that class receives, because it's Mardi Gras season in my land, where I'm from, and so as we say, let the le bon temps roule, so in French, let the good times roll, so, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, they will receive the king's cake. That's what we say in, in Mardi Gras time, the king's cake, so I'll make sure that it's, I'm going to personally take care of it and have it delivered to that school. Just Board members, just so that you know, we are addressing all federal mandates that have been sent down from the President's Office. We're going to be communicating with our families, and so that we don't have a lot of inform, we don't have any information, to be honest, but what we do have around protocols is what we will be communicating to our families. And now to our Be Kind 330. Citizen recently called our Transportation Department to share a heartfelt message about one of our drivers, Ms. Sheena, and her aide, Mr. Robert. She spoke of the compassion and care they show their students every day, especially during this harsh weather, and although she chose to remain anonymous, she wanted us to know how much she looks forward to seeing them each day as their kindness brings a, brings about a bright spot to her neighborhood. And this thoughtful call has already inspired those directly involved, and serves as a reminder to all of us that small acts of kindness can leave a lasting impression. And the very last thing is, Board members, you have with you is the Blueprint for Excellence, our strategic plan that has, I want to thank Communications, Ms. Joanne Isaac for being the lead helm of this, but also our cornerstone leaders, you'll notice their names are in the book, on page 21, Dr. Chapman, Marsha Ebrich, Dr. Lash, Dr. Kaver, Mr. Leckley Clifford, Ms. Carter, Ms. Folk, and, and all of the teams, their teams, our families came out to participate and engage, thank you for your feedback and engagement, and our principals, our teachers, all of those people that participated, I just want to thank them for helping to produce Year Two, and with that, I am asking for it to be approved, so that we can move forward, if you will, please, thank you.
me, Year Two?
So moved.
Okay. It's been moved by Member Alexander. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And it's been seconded by Member Hall. Is there any discussion? Member Molnar?
I can read.
You sure?
Wait, do you, so you want me to circle back after?
Yeah, just circle back.
No, I mean, if you're ready, this, for the brevity of the meeting, you've been recognized.
Yeah.
I was rewatching the Policy Committee meeting, and there seemed to be a lot of questions. And I was also reflecting on the Equity Committee meeting where we also had a lot of questions about the data. A sentence that kept coming in and kept discussing is, when the data comes in, when the data comes in, sometimes the data is a year behind, but not always. Sometimes the data isn't a year behind. And so, when I'm looking at each of the cornerstones, all four cornerstones, I see the rows here with the objective, and we see 2023, 2024, 2025. But I'm curious, for each of these columns, is this the year that the data comes in, the year that the data was collected? Is it sometimes a combination of either, for the column, just the column headings generally?
So, the data comes in delayed here, and generally, we don't sometimes get the previous year's data until somewhere around August, September, October, which is usually when we do, I'm sorry, which is usually when we do the, the review of the data that has been, that we've received. All of it does not come in at the same time, and that's why we sort of wait so that we can get it. But what we do receive, we begin to start working on the, on the book, which sort of delays us in getting it. We would love to have it ready in August to start school, but we don't always have that opportunity just because of the way the data comes from the state. And so, by the time we get around September, October is when we've received the data. We will do a review at a board meeting, but then, this year, we did the state of the system where we went through some of the data points that were salient. But yes, this is current data, and what we did different this year is we actually put the projected and the actual in the book this year, just to show what we projected versus what actually, did we actually earn.
I'm sorry, Member Molnar.
Thank you. Yes, yes, that, that makes sense, and I, I understand it is the most current data that we have. I understand that. I think the comment I was getting to is the alignment of when the data was collected, knowledge of when the data was collected versus when the data was received, is critical for accurately tracking and evaluating the effectiveness of interventions, right? The data might have been collected in 2022, we received it in 2023, but maybe we changed something in between '22 and '23. So what, what was happening, what was working? So I'm saying this because when we have 2023, 2024, my recommendation is that we actually put at the top of each row the school year, not the calendar year. Because also, just because we received it this year, five months after it was collected, does not mean next year we will receive the data five months after it was collected. Instead of, instead of having the date on top of when we received the data, I think it would be more effective for us to have at the top the school year in which we collected the data, or the data was, whatever happened. So that is my recommendation for these, and, and everything else, I understand, but just, just typography, really. It should be really easy just to have the school year on the top instead of the calendar year.
Just a point of clarification. Thank you, Member Molnar. So when you're saying that, just for everyone, when you're saying the data collected, so for instance, if we know that the readiness test, or the Ohio State test are given in the spring of '25, right? You're saying, if I'm, I want to make sure I'm following you, that you're saying, okay, it was administered in spring of 2025. That's when we rendered the assessment. We received the results from the assessment back in August, well, October of 2025. Is that what you mean about when it, when it was collected, meaning when the test was given, and then when we received results back?
Yes. So, so instead of, so let's say, the test was given in spring of 2025, we got the results back in fall of 2025. So when we talk about the second graders, which ones are the second graders? The second graders in fall of 2025, or the second graders in spring of 2025? Because now those are third graders.
Understood.
So if on the top, we just say 24, 25 school year, then we just know who they are.
Understood. Thank you. I wanted to be clear. Thank you. I think that's a good idea. Thank you. Uh, Member Hall?
I just had a quick question regarding, not around the blueprint, but when we were talking about the emergency contact, are we just asking, are we sending stuff home? Or are we collecting this information when parents come to either, like, pick up their kid or events?
No. Uh-uh. There's, Ms. Yvonne, there's, there's, she's going to have, but there's going to be a link for them, though. But we are sending the information home.
Okay. So that was my question. Are we able to do something different? Because if we only have 6,400 collected, and it's over 20,000 students, when they have events at the school, I know at some of the schools in my cluster, they have parents come and they have a conversation or awards or whatever, and there's parents there, and then they have translators to speak to some of those parents. Are we able to collect some of this emergency contact during the school time?
So we are doing an all-out blast. We will, we will do a mailing, we will do some parent events, we will do some through Home Access Center, so be ready for some all calls telling you to go on Home Access Center. So we're going to do multiple ways to get this information out.
Okay, thank you. Because I'm thinking, when you mail things, it's not always received, you know? So when we have parents come actually into the, the schools, and this is in different languages, too.
Correct.
For our community, okay. So then we can actually get those parents where they at, where they are in the school, and have them fill it out.
And, and different levels of support are needed. So we're also thinking about who needs what kind of support, because they may not be computer literate or have access to a computer. So we're looking, we're thinking about all the different ways we need to support our families in getting this information.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Just to follow up to that, what, what is our checkpoints for this? I know we have our parent liaisons and things in the building. What are, do we have, like, an estimated timeline of, by this point, we should see an improvement of this, we're looking to have about this many responses back? Do we have something in place like that?
So our initial push, we're going to look at three weeks, and then after the three weeks, we'll share with buildings where they are, and then we could even start doing some targeting. These are families you still need to hear from on the building level.
Thank you so much, Ms. Culver.
You're welcome.
No, are there any other questions? If not, we can call for the vote. We made a motion, then we made, I made the motion.
The motion was of...
Seconded by Hall. It was moved by.
Correct.
So I'm calling for the vote. Is that all right?
Yeah, you're correct.
Okay.
Ms. Hall?
Is this the vote, sorry, point of clarification. Is this the vote on as it is or with the changes? I make, I make a motion to wait until we've made the changes until we can vote on it so we don't have...
I understand. Thank you, Member Molnar. Actually, we don't have to wait. We can just amend the motion to include the said changes. We can, we can amend the, the current motion. I could just, we can amend the motion to include the said changes offered by Member Molnar, and then we can call for the vote.
And Dr. Molnar, we've only printed just for you all, so we can have your recommendations changed in here, and then, once we put the official thing out, then those changes would be reflected.
So there will be no vote right now? We'll just wait till you bring it back, and then we'll vote next time, correct?
No, no, you could vote now.
With the amendment.
With the amendment to make the change that she recommended, Dr. Molnar recommended.
Okay, just for clarity, so we're going to amend the, you, you made the first one, amend to include, this is right in Robert's rules.
Right, right.
It's amend to the motion, to include the, the added of what Member Molnar said, which Member Molnar, you might have to repeat it, but to add the academic school year on top of the proposal, and that's the only thing you're adding, and then we're going to call for the vote.
Got it.
Because that's, okay. All right. Is there...
So I'll make the motion to be included, the changes is made by Dr. Molnar.
The changes to add.
Yes, for the academic school year at the top. Yes.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. It's been moved and proper, it's been moved by Member, the amended motion has been moved by Member Alexander and properly seconded by Member Hall. Is there any further discussion? Okay. If not, Mr. Treasor, could you please call for the vote?
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Motion carries six oh.
Thank you. Next, we will have the Treasurer's Report.
Madam Chair, you want to, we, now we need to vote on the, the article with the amendment.
Thank you, Member Sykes. Now we need, thank you, it was approved to amend the motion, now we need to vote on that amended motion to include the changes made. All right. No, that's okay. Mr. Alexander?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Sykes. Any discussion? All right, now we're calling for the vote.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Dr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Motion carries six oh.
Thank you. Now we'll have the Treasurer's Report.
You've got yours to the left. So, the first resolution is a bond retirement appropriations, fund appropriations. We vetted this through the Finance Committee in fairly extensive detail. So, but essentially, what it does, you can see the sheet that I gave you, gives you just a summary, but what it does is it allows, makes us in compliance with the law, with state law, and then it ensures that we, as a board, are approving funds and exactly what we're approving them for, so there's transparency, and so that we can pay our, essentially, our mortgage. This is, this is authorizing us to pay, we're starting to receive the funds from the bond issue. We got the $15 million advance, and now we have to start making those house payments, if you will, those debt retirement payments. So this resolution allows us to do that, and it requires board action for us to be able to do that.
Is there, is there a motion to approve the resolution for the bond retirement fund appropriations?
So moved.
It's been moved by Member Sykes. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Member Harrison. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call for the vote, please.
Ms. Hall? Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Motion carries six oh.
The second resolution is consistent in the vein of the bond issue. It is allowing us to begin to develop appropriations for the construction of North High School, and this is funds that will be used, again, because it's required by Ohio law, but it will also allow us to begin, for example, hiring our architects, paying our fees, all the things that we need to do to initiate the beginning of this construction. And for a lot of reasons, we want to move as quickly as we can, because we know that increases in construction are averaging about 16% inflation per year. So it's still outpacing, well-outpacing inflation in other areas in the economy. This is required statutorily as well.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Is there a motion to approve the resolution for North High School Construction Fund Appropriations?
So moved.
It's been moved by Member Sykes. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Member Hall. Any discussion? Member Hall?
I just have a quick question. I've heard this throughout the community. Are we planning to rebuild North on its present ground?
I'll turn that over to the Superintendent.
There has not been any discussion with this board that I brought about the school being placed anywhere else. There have been discussions outside in the community, I've heard, you know, things, but that would have to be brought to the board, and the board would have to approve if the board wants it built somewhere else, whatever that, wherever that somewhere else would be, outside of where the school currently is. Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to just acknowledge those community conversations, saying that, but I know my recommendation would be keep it where it's at, but we can discuss that at a later time, if that's even up for discussion, I'm not sure, but I just kind of wanted to did that extra conversation, because there's a lot of talk saying it's going somewhere where me, as a board member, I'm like, no, it's not, you know? So I just needed clarity on being able to say that's not true. Thank you.
Yes.
Is there any other discussion? Might be some discussion on that later, because it's seen some readiness with that, but in any event, roll call, please.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Motion carries six oh.
The final piece I have, again, vetted through our Finance Committee last week. I'll give you two documents, just in case you don't have them, and that is the actual monthly report along with the summary page. I'm trying that this time to see if that makes it clear. If you have any questions later, as you start to digest all this information, please feel free to call my office, and certainly, we'll sit down and go through it. But you can see, we have a pretty clear revenue analysis, expenditure data. We are trending slightly lower in a cash reserve than what we had, what we have forecasted, but that still has an opportunity to turn around, as you all are aware, that we're halfway through the year. So these monthly reports are getting a little more consistent and a little more close to what we think will actually, where we'll actually be. We're, we've started to implement some of those reductions towards the $10 million. You've seen evidence or signs of that here in central office, for example. So those things are underway, and we're moving forward. We will also update on a five-year forecast a couple months earlier. So we're going to do it one time that we're not required. We're required in May, but we're going to come back in the March timeframe so that we have a real clear snapshot of, of where we are. But right now, the trend is just, just less than 2% off, but that makes a difference to some degree at the end, end of the five-year forecast. So we covered that in detail where we were at our Finance Committee meeting, and we'll continue to closely monitor... continue to closely monitor those numbers as we move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Is there a motion to approve the resolution for the December 2024 financial report?
So move.
It's been moved by Member Harrison. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Member Sykes. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the President's Report. For my report today, as part of our commitment to transparency and timely action, I would like to acknowledge several key concerns raised by our community and provide updates on how these issues are being addressed. The first issue was the facilities issue at Hatton CLC. We have been informed of a heating system failure affecting six classrooms at Hatton CLC. The necessary repairs have been identified, and parts are currently on order. Unfortunately, due to supply chain delays, these parts are not expected to arrive until March. In the interim, temporary measures have been implemented to ensure a safe and comfortable learning environment for students and staff. The Facilities Department is closely monitoring the situation, and we are working diligently to resolve the issue as quickly as possible. Next is weather-related school, school decisions. A lot of parents, when we had that weather a week or so ago, were very concerned that school was not canceled the first time around, and when parents informed me, and I make sure I inform the board, we sent it to the right parties here at 10 North Main Street. And so on January 16th, 2020 of this year, APS staff worked thoroughly through the early morning hours to evaluate weather conditions. At the time, decisions needed to be made, all areas were deemed safe for travel, and transportation services were initiated. However, unforeseen changes in weather occurred after buses were already on the road. We do understand and respect parents' individual decisions when they decide to keep their children home during inclement weather, especially if their learners are walkers, or they don't feel safe with their learners arriving on a bus. But we will continue to prioritize student safety in all our operation decisions, and so we do thank you for our patience, for your patience as we work through those things. We also had apparent concern about snow removal at Resnick. We received the comments regarding the snow removal and plowing at Resnick. These concerns have been shared with our Facilities Department for immediate review and resolution, so just know, we are aware, we heard you, and we are working on that as well. We deeply appreciate the feedback that we receive from parents and staff regarding these issues. Your insights are invaluable in identifying areas for improvement and ensuring accountability of this elected board. I have personally reached out to the Facilities Team and key personnel to prioritize solution to these matters. I want to assure our community that we are actively addressing these challenges and remain committed to maintaining the safety and well-being, of our students and staff. Again, I thank you all for your patience and understanding as we work through these issues. I would like to thank all of Central Office staff, who I forwarded those messages to, based off your department, for your, how you expeditiously responded, Superintendent, excellent, within, less than a day, you turned around with response, Deb Folk, and all other members of Central Office, so thank you. That concludes the President's Report. Next, we have our committee reports, and we will start with legal contracts and board
Madam President, excuse me, Madam President, no report. We will be meeting this Wednesday, the 29th, at 5:30 here in this room. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Alexander. Next is finance and capital. Well, is there any questions for legal? I don't think it will be a snow report. All right. Next, we will have finance and capital management, please.
Thank you, Madam President. So the Finance Committee did meet last Thursday, as you heard from our Treasurer, and we did actually review the December 2024 budget, finance report, as he indicated, as well as the December finance report. In addition, we did also, I'll talk a bit about our, about vouchers and where we were, and I appreciate you, you bringing that to us, and where we are as a community, as where we are as a, as a school, and so we will kind of stay up to date on that. Also, I may, I mentioned last time that the Vouchers Hurt Ohio Committee will be meeting on the 15th at 10 o'clock in Columbus, and that meeting did take place. Unfortunately, I cannot report very much back on what happened, because we were in executive session with the attorney. And so I can tell you that the judge did postpone the trial. The trial is now scheduled to start in April, and I will keep you up to date on what's happening with that, once the attorney indicates, what information we can share with, with our various boards. The next meeting for the Finance Committee is February 18th at 4:30 in this room.
Thank you, Member Sykes. Next, we will have instructional policy and student achievement.
Thank you, Madam President. Instructional Policy and Student Achievement Committee met on Wednesday, January 15th. Very, very good information. Marcy E. Bright talked about Career, Technico Planning District, report card, CTPD, we have all these acronyms, so gotta say I'm slow. This report card gauges how well we are preparing high school students for post-secondary success. The overall CTPD state report card shows that APS moved from 3.5 stars to four stars, which four stars is exceeding state standards. So good job, teachers and students. The four components of the report card are as follows. Achievement, two stars, graduation, four stars, career and post-secondary readiness, five stars, and post-program outcomes, four stars. We are making sure that our students are ready when they leave high school. Also, Ryan, I'm sorry, Nate Ruin, sorry if I'm destroying your last name, talked about sterile processing certification programs. Akron Public Schools with partners, partnered with University of Akron to provide a course for scholars to obtain a certificate of sterile processing. What is sterile processing, you ask? It's the process of cleaning, inspecting, disinfecting, and sterilizing medical devices and instruments used in surgical procedures. So if anyone has ever had surgery, you want those instruments to be clean, and now our students will have the ability to learn and receive a high-paying job. There is a high employment demand, both in Akron and Northeast Ohio. APS will become a preferred training partner in partnership with the University of Akron through a MOU. U of A will train CCAA healthcare pathway teachers on sterile processing, and the pathway teachers will train our students. The MOU will be at the February 10th Board Agenda for approval. In that meeting, we also talked about different ways of students being able to learn more about this, such as maybe volunteering as a candy striper in the hospital, while they're transporting instruments like this back and forth, maybe to the surgical area, or to get cleaned. Specimens, things like that, so getting our students with hands-on skills before they even go into this. You know, we can bring stuff up to kids, but if they don't understand or know exactly what it is, they may not do it. So if we can get them into the hospitals, summer break or spring break, to give them these opportunities, and also gain volunteer hours for graduation, I think this is a wonderful opportunity. We also talked about the Blueprint for Excellence, the strategic plan, by Joanna Isaac. She presented the updates for the two-year Blueprint of Excellence. And that concludes my announcements. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Hall. Are there any questions for instructional policy? Hearing none, we will move on to equity, the Equity Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. The Equity Committee met January 15th, and it started with a presentation from Mr. Keith Lichty Clifford on our local equitable, equitable access plan, LEAP, and the process for developing our local equitable access plan. So we analyzed our data to determine equity gaps, and then they engaged in root cause analysis to determine the most likely cause of the gaps, and then identifying strategies to address the gaps, outlining implementation and monitoring process. So they shared with us this data from the Department of Education and Workforce, which we used, and by we, I mean they, I just read what they gave us in the presentation, but it is available to all of us, so even community members can get information from the Department of Education and Workforce. And so a lot of the data that the school improvement plan must address, the equity gaps for inexperienced principals, courses with advanced curriculum, out-of-field teachers, inexperienced teachers, not effective teachers, and frequently absent teachers. So I know one of our community members mentioned a concern about frequently absent teachers, so I know this data is available online, but also it was shared with us in the Equity Committee meeting, that in the 2223 school year to the 2324 school year, we actually had an 8% increase, so less absent teachers we are expecting in, we are closing the gap, was what was presented to us during the Equity Committee meeting. And so hopefully, looking at when we receive the 2425 data, that gap will be closing also. So also, during that meeting, we had board members sharing, and we discussed the future dates, all of the future dates for the next board meeting, or the committee, Equity Committee meetings for the rest of the year, and we also did a reminder that we do have the public comment section for all the committee meetings, and I've heard that people are already signing up for our next committee meeting, which is February 3rd. And we also discussed a connection to federal, state, and local considerations our Superintendent mentioned during his Superintendent Reports, some of the actions recently announced by the executive branch of our federal government, and it was refreshing to hear that our department and Dr. Chapman already had some things in place for our students regarding the rights and safety related to some of the orders and actions of our students who might be concerned with the immigration and other things that are happening from the government. So our next meeting is February 3rd, and I actually will not be at our next meeting, let you know. I'll be at the NSBA Advocacy and Equity Conference, so I look forward to sharing resources when I return. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Are there any questions? Hearing that I do have, I know that I was at that meeting, and Keith and Dr. Chapman, the two questions, you guys may be able to glean insight. I know the one was about the teacher absences, because Member Monar said it was a decrease. I had made a note, so I need to correct my notes. I thought it was an increase, like it went from 37% to 41% absences. Is that, with the presentation, that's what I, I was under the, no. Man, yeah, because it was a, it was up here on the presentation, and I noted that, so I wanted to, so I need to clarify in my notes, because that's what I was understanding when it was explained, because then we were seeing, how can we work? Because we were going to extrapolate per building and things, I know we talked about that.
Yeah, so unfortunately, I did not bring all my notes with me. I do think it, you know, we did label the chart, and one was a handout, one was in a chart, so I would prefer to do my homework, but I would be more than happy to do a follow-up.
If you find it too, just so, just so I can, yes, ma'am, can you go ahead and read exactly what it is?
Yes, so it went from 49% in 2223 to 41% in 2324.
Okay, that's the 40, I understand, because I thought 39. Thank you so much.
From 790 to 650, so yeah.
Okay, so, thank you, I, Member Monar.
And then we did talk about our data is a year behind, so next January, we'll see what happened this year.
Okay, great, thank you. And then Dr. Chapman, actually, because I know the Superintendent read something about, in his report, talking about the, talking about, sorry, I could have said that better, describing how we're trying to put things in place due to current legislation for students that may be undocumented students and things like that, and then you highlighted that. I know that, you look very nice, Dr. Chapman, but also, I know that you, y'all know I get, I'm sorry, but you, you had stated that you kind of were in front of it, like before this legislation even came out, that you and your team, as part of Equity, you were working and putting things in places to kind of set us up for success in that?
So Yvonne Culver just shared parts of the emergency safety plan, and that is inclusive of the things that we know we will need to do for our young people.
Okay, I just remembered that you had mentioned that we, about being, okay, thank you so much, Dr. Chapman. Thank you, Member Monar, I appreciate you for clarifying that information.
The guidance that is going to be coming out to parents, the staff, that's coming from, I'm sorry, Ms. Sykes, the guidance that I was referring to, that's coming from Student Services through Ms. Culver's.
Okay, thank you.
And there's a team, Dr. Chapman may be on that team, I'm not sure, but there's a whole team that's, they met today to, and what we're, trying to gather the information to put that together.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much for that, I appreciate that. Any other questions? I think that was it. All right, moving on. Now we're at the point of our agenda, approval of previous meeting minutes. Is, is there a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes for January 13th, 2025?
I make a motion to approve the previous minutes for January 13th, 2025.
It's been moved by Member Hall. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Harris, Member Harris, excuse me. Is there any discussion? Yes, I'm Member Monar.
Thank you, Madam President. One of the things that is noted in the minutes was, I asked for an update on the ULP for November, because I wanted to know if it had been resolved, or how much money or time had been spent in an effort to resolve it. So I know it's only been two weeks, but if someone could get back to me this week, just with some kind of update, or even just to schedule when I will receive some kind of update, just so we don't forget about it and leave it hanging on a back burner on that, so thank you.
So we haven't forgotten, but I just want to explain that these are legal processes that sometime takes months before we even hear anything. So what, what we got from the attorney was what we were able to share with each of you. But these things take months sometimes. We're, we still have not heard from things that happen early on in a school year. So I can't sit here and tell you that I'm going to come back next week with a timeline, because I, I don't even regulate that. It's just when it's provided, is when I can provide it. But that's what the attorney provided to, to everyone.
Yes, so, so what I asked for two weeks ago was just how much time and money has been spent towards that effort so far, or any, any information that I could have about that so far? And so if someone could let me know this week, at least to schedule when, I would know how much time and money has spent towards that effort so far. Thank you.
We sent that already. Last week. Okay, we'll just resend it.
Did it come from Ruth's email? It came from Ruth, so if you want to do a search, I mean, just so we can clarify that you received it. Are there any other discussion, any other discussion? All right. Roll call, please.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Motion carries six oh.
Next, we'll have our Personnel Recommendations. Dr. Robinson?
Thank you, President Jackson. Are there any questions around Personnel Recommendations in Section 10?
Member Harrison?
Yeah, I'll cover this with, thank you, Madam President, I'll cover this with, because this is in a couple of different sections. And I know the answer is not for tonight, but I want to, when we are moving positions, when we're changing the funding types, okay, whether we're going from 50-50, from 50 general fund to 50 Title I funding or 100% to this, to this, if we can have a explanation as to why, because some of them would look like they offset each other. If I added up all of the ones that go from 50 to 100 or from 100 to 50, if we can have an explanation as to why we change funding for a current position. And if we could ask, if I can ask for, how many positions do we have in Title I? How many positions in the, whatever the job code or the name of the position for Title I? Thank you.
Thank you, Member Harrison.
Section 12, which would be supplemental contracts. Section 13.
Were there any questions for 12, Section 12? Okay, Superintendent, thank you.
Section 16. Section 17.
Thank you, Member Harrison.
Thank you, Madam President. 17, I just, what is lunch wages? What is meant by that?
Is Ms. Depp folk here?
The question was, what are lunch wages?
Lunch wages is in here in parentheses, so I just wondered what lunch wages meant.
There's the expert.
Good evening. Lunch wages are actually the federal and state funding that is sent directly to the school district for reimbursements of meals claimed. It is not general fund and they are designated to only be used to pay for the staff, the benefits, the supplies, equipment that operate the program. So, that's just one of the dedications. You have lunch wages, you have breakfast wages, you have snack wages, it depends on the program being supported by the division.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Depp. Section 18.
Member Hall?
Before I just start, I will say it's also missing two acronyms for a temporary worker or an advocate. That's also missing. Well, my question for Section 18, I see that there are bus drivers, transportation drivers, bus drivers, substitute drivers, and so forth. Some are resigning, some are retiring. I just wanted to know, do we have, have we like talked to or partnered with Stark State in regards to, and I don't know how old kids have to be to learn to drive the bus, it could be 18, it could be something else, but I know that Stark State has a CDL program and to get more students or people engaged in driving buses so that we don't have a shortage, have we looked into like some of those programs or if someone wants to be a bus driver, do we have the, I know we have the partnership, but do we have the means to recommend people to go to Stark State and get their CDL license? I'm asking this just because, you know, people are resigning and so forth or retiring, just so again, we don't have a shortage and we're not looking for drivers or we have to, you know, go a different route. How can we support this program right here?
Oh, so we do have recruitment fairs where we are recruiting bus drivers, but one of the excellent things about being a bus driver here in Akron, so please tell your friends and your neighbors if they're interested in becoming a bus driver, we hire them as a sub bus driver because you can earn your CDL getting paid while training. And so, that's one of the best things about working for APS and becoming a bus driver. So, you can get your CDL through us.
Wonderful, thank you. That was a wonderful announcement. Come to APS and learn and get your CDLs for free. Thank you.
Section 20, of course, there's nothing there. And, okay, Section 21, so. You hear the question, Ms. Sykes? Oh, so I would like to recommend the approval of the recommendations in Personnel Act, or recommendations presented in categories 10 through 20.
Is there a motion to approve the personnel recommendations in categories 10 through 20?
So moved.
It's been moved by Member Monar, is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been second by Member Hall, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Ms. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Monar?
Yes.
Motion carries six oh.
Next is the Board's Letters and Consent Agenda, Dr. Robinson.
Thank you, President Jackson. I'd like to recommend approval, sorry, the consent agenda mirrors the Board Letters in Section 22, 23, and 24. The Board Letters are not approved, but the resolutions and motions they mirror need to be approved. The purpose of the Board Letters is to explain the consent agenda items. And so, I would like to recommend the approval of the resolutions and motions presented in category 25, they're in the proper format, and I move for their approval, please.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? This is 22 through 25.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's been moved by Member Alexander, properly second by Member Hall.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Is there, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Monar?
Yes.
Ms. Sykes?
Yes.
Motion carries six oh.
Thank you. Next, we have business fair recommendations, there aren't, there aren't none for this meeting. Additionally, there is no unfinished business, nor is there any new business. However, there is a need for this body to recess into executive session. And because there is a need to go into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 12122G1 to consider the employment dismissal and discipline of a public employee or employees and/or officials and pursuant to RC 121.22G3 to conference with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are subject, that are the subject of pending or imminent court action. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
It's been moved by Member Alexander, is there a second? It's been second by Member Harrison, any discussion? Thank you. Hearing none, we now recess into executive session. Roll call, I'm sorry, roll call.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Monar?
Yes.
Ms. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Motion carries six oh. We recess at 7:24.
There is action that needs to be taken as a result of our executive session.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes, Madam President. I move to retain the law firms of Manzik, Reskin, Ryder, Gordon, Reece Scully, Mansukini, and Bricker, Graydon, as needed and on demand, on call basis to assist us with the legal needs of the Board of Education. I further move that the President and Treasurer execute the engagement agreement between these firms, and the fees and the costs associated with these engagements shall be for the rates enumerated in the engagement agreement for professional services.
The motion has been made by Mr. Alexander. Is there a second?
So moved.
It's been second. It's been moved by Member Alexander, second by Member Sykes. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call please.
Reverend Harrison?
I'm abstaining.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Motion carries. Reece Scully, Mansukini, and Bricker, Graydon, as needed and on demand, on call basis to assist us with the legal needs of the Board of Education. I further move that the President and Treasurer execute the engagement agreement between these firms, and the fees and the costs associated with these engagements shall be for the rates enumerated in the engagement agreement for professional services.
The motion has been made by Mr. Alexander. Is there a second?
So moved.
It's been seconded. It's been moved by Member Alexander, seconded by Member Sykes. Any discussion? Hearing non. Roll call please.
Reverend Harrison.
Abstain.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Ms. Sykes.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero with one abstention.
Thank you. Our next meeting will be Monday, February 10th. At this time, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Wednesday meeting.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Sykes. Also, I need to announce that there will be a special meeting on Wednesday of this week, so an official notice will go out as well. This was just also decided in executive session, so just to give a heads up, there will be a special meeting on Wednesday at 3:00 PM. I mean, there will be a need to go into executive session at that time. Thank you. Okay, now, our next meeting will be February 10th, Monday, February 10th, 5:30 PM here in the boardroom. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
I appreciate you all. It's been moved by Mr. Alexander. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Ms. Sykes. Is there any discussion? Hearing non. God bless you. Thank you, and good night. This meeting is adjourned.
We got to take roll call.
Roll call. I'd be too anxious.
Reverend Harrison.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Ms. Sykes.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero with one abstention.
Thank you. Our next meeting will be Monday, February 10th. At this time, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Wednesday meeting.
Thank you. Okay, yes, thank you, Sykes. Also, I need to announce that there will be a special meeting on Wednesday of this week, so an official notice will go out as well. This was just also decided in executive session, so just to give a heads up, there will be a special meeting on Wednesday at 3:00 PM. I mean, there will be a need to go into executive session at that time. Thank you. Okay, now, our next meeting will be February 10th, Monday, February 10th, 5:30 PM here in the boardroom. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
I appreciate you all. It's been moved by Mr. Alexander. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. It's been moved by Member Alexander, seconded by Member Sykes. Any discussion?
Hearing non. Roll call please. Reverend Harrison.
Abstain.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Ms. Sykes.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero with one abstention.
Thank you. Our next meeting will be Monday, February 10th. At this time, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Wednesday meeting.
Thank you. Okay, yes, thank you, Sykes. Also, I need to announce that there will be a special meeting on Wednesday of this week, so an official notice will go out as well. This was just also decided in executive session, so just to give a heads up, there will be a special meeting on Wednesday at 3:00 PM. I mean, there will be a need to go into executive session at that time. Thank you. Okay, now, our next meeting will be February 10th, Monday, February 10th, 5:30 PM here in the boardroom. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
I appreciate you all. It's been moved by Mr. Alexander. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Ms. Sykes. Is there any discussion? Hearing non. God bless you. Thank you, and good night. This meeting is adjourned.
We got to take roll call.
Roll call. I'd be too anxious.
Reverend Harrison.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Ms. Sykes.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero with one abstention.
Thank you. Our next meeting will be Monday, February 10th. At this time, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I appreciate you all. It's been moved by Mr. Alexander. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. It's been moved by Member Alexander, seconded by Member Sykes. Any discussion?
Hearing non. Roll call please. Reverend Harrison.
Abstain.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Ms. Sykes.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero with one abstention.
Thank you. Our next meeting will be Monday, February 10th. At this time, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Wednesday meeting.
Thank you. Okay, yes, thank you, Sykes. Also, I need to announce that there will be a special meeting on Wednesday of this week, so an official notice will go out as well. This was just also decided in executive session, so just to give a heads up, there will be a special meeting on Wednesday at 3:00 PM. I mean, there will be a need to go into executive session at that time. Thank you. Okay, now, our next meeting will be February 10th, Monday, February 10th, 5:30 PM here in the boardroom. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
I appreciate you all. It's been moved by Mr. Alexander. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Ms. Sykes. Is there any discussion? Hearing non. God bless you. Thank you, and good night. This meeting is adjourned.
We got to take roll call.
Roll call. I'd be too anxious.
Reverend Harrison.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Ms. Sykes.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Now you can do it.
This meeting is adjourned. Blessings.